Hello, everyone out there in radio or internet land. It's Media Cypher's our show over on eighty-nine point one WIDR. Try to dig underneath the headlines and really talk about what's going on in the community from a working class perspective. We are joined today by one of twenty twenty-one's candidates for Kalamazoo City Commission. Some of you who've been following city politics or activism for a while, this might be a familiar face to you. But we are joined today by Don Cooney. And first of all, Don, thanks again to take time out of your busy campaign schedule to join us today.
Thank you so much for inviting me, Andy. I'm delighted to be here.
All right. Well, I think the first thing we're going to do before we really dig into all of the issues. You know, just one, you know, kind of like, you know, if you could tell the folks a little bit about who you are and why you decided to run. And I'm also kind of curious, you know, what, what made you or what factors, I suppose, made you decide to run again? So for those who might be new, Don was on City Commission for a number of years, stepped down in twenty nineteen and has decided to run again here in twenty twenty-one. So if you could kind of tell the listeners at home a little bit about that.
Right, okay, um, so, um, I was a city commissioner in Kalamazoo for twenty-two years. And the last election, I was up for election, I decided not to run again because I got two grandkids. And they were very young and they needed some more attention than I was giving them. So I opted out to spend more time with them. And now they're grown up a little bit more and they're doing better and then they're, they're fine. So I decided, I, that was one factor. The other factor is I don't like a lot of things that are happening in the city. Um, there's too much violence in the city. I think we can do better on the homeless situation in the city. I think the economic inequality in the city is unsustainable. And I do believe that there is some movement now toward the idea of reparations, which I believe in very strongly. And the other thing is, um, that there, um, there's some money now that wasn't around when, when I was in office the last time. I mean, there's some money from the federal government and there's other money around now. And there's an interest in doing something. So I wanted to be a part of it all.
All right. Thank you, Don. And that's going to segue. This is kind of an extra question, but I know you mentioned it in our exchange. We have some of the questions that I'm going to ask you kind of do address various aspects of this issue. But maybe a little bit more broadly, you know, in your experience, you know, what have been some of the big, big challenges when it comes to income inequality in the city of Kalamazoo? And what do you think the city can and should be doing to address that?
Right, well, um, I, I think the first thing is to be clear on what, how, how bad the inequality is. Um, and of course, the United Way has, has done the study, the Alice Study, which looks at families that have people that are working. And, um, they measure how are those families doing or meeting their basic needs? And when they looked at it, they found that in the county, now it's going to be much worse in the city. Well, when you look at the county, there were thirty-nine percent of the families who, um, who were either below the poverty line or had somebody in their family working and couldn't meet their basic needs. They wouldn't be able to handle an emergency three hundred dollar, um, emergency. They couldn't handle that. So that's in the county. In the city, it's over fifty percent of families. And in Census Tract four nine oh oh seven, it's sixty-two percent of the families. So the, the need is enormous right there. And what can the city do about it? Well, it's really complex. I don't think the city can do all this by themselves. I believe that the federal government has to step in. But I believe we could do a lot more than we're doing right now. I think we need to put more resources into these communities, which are struggling so much to, to kind of take the expenses off them, like for childcare, like for shelter, like and then work with the community for living wages. I think that the city could be the catalyst to try to move in those directions.
All right. Thank you, Don. You know, a very, very good answer. Um, our next one is going to be talking about the climate crisis. And there's definitely more of a, you know, a long term and a short term problem. As we've seen, Kalamazoo's been hit by, you know, unseasonably warm and cold weather flooding. Flooding is a, is a big issue. But the first one is like, one, like, how do you think Kalamazoo should address the climate crisis? And this, this one's always like a very present in my mind. You think we should do more to prepare for climate refugees? And just a little context for listeners at home, Michigan is kind of protected by a lot of climate scientists to be a relative Goldilocks zone compared to some of the other parts of the country in the world going into the next few decades. And I think any climate solution that really needs to look at how we can increase or manage our carrying capacity for what is probably going to be a large influx of people. So, Don, how do you think the city should, should address that?
Well, okay, um, I, I want to first agree with you about the seriousness of the crisis. I mean, all the reports, there's no question that, um, that we are heading in a very dangerous and terrible direction. And it's manifest in the city with the floods that are taking place and the terrible storms that are happening. And in all those different things. Um, I think the city, I don't, I, I don't think the city, this, I don't think that the city has the resources to really deal with climate change, but that's not saying we can't do anything. I think we can do a lot. I think we should join with the National League of Cities and other advocacy groups to press the federal government for the changes that are needed, because the real critical changes have to be at the federal government. Moving toward alternative energies, sources, um, and getting away from the carbon dioxide thing. In the city, I think one of the biggest things we can do is educate people. Raising people's consciousness about the, the critical situation with the crisis. Um, I think that we have to, the, the city is about, I just was reading in a paper last night, that the city is about, is looking at a sustainability plan. And the city is working with businesses to, and consumer energy to look at how big businesses in the city could use less energy. I think there are steps in the right direction. Um, but we have a lot more to, a lot, a lot further to go. I think in this city, we have a lot of expertise here. Um, I noted at Western, um, the Climate Crisis Group that works and meets every single week. I think they have a lot of ideas and I think we have to enlist their support in deciding what needs to be done. I don't claim to be the expert in this, but I think there are experts in this city. And I think we have to utilize them better. Now, for the refugees coming, Andy, I don't know what we can do about that. I think refugees are going to be coming here for a lot of reasons. Certainly from climate, because there's going to be places where people can't grow food and don't have access to water. But people are going to be coming here also because of violence that's going on in the world. We know Afghan refugees are on their way here. I was just doing a meeting yesterday about the kids, unaccompanied kids that are coming from Afghanistan to this area. So I do think that all these things are making us rethink isolationism and how we are an island and what is happening in the rest of the world, we don't have to look at. No, we have to look at it. We have to look at it because of climate change. We have to look at it because of the refugees that are happening or being driven out all over the world. And I think the economy, looking at what has happened internationally with the economy, and certainly COVID is forcing us to take a, a more international perspective on everything we do.
All right. Thank you, Don. I appreciate that. Um, and you know, yeah, I really like what you said about really trying to farm out the, the kind of bank of knowledge we've gotten this community. There are a lot of really, really talented people thinking up these solutions. And it's, it's good to kind of take that position and be more of a listening ear in the city on that stuff. Uh, next question has to do with gun violence. So as you know, gun violence has really been racking the Kalamazoo area over the last year. Um, to your mind, what are some of the root causes of that violence? And how should the city address them?
Yeah, so, um, the gun violence in the city, I was just reading the statistics. Twenty homicides this year and sixty shootings in the city. Um, just recently, um, up here at Western, right off Western's campus, uh, terrible violence up there. And I'll just tell you a quick story on this. Um, I'm teaching a class this semester and a young fellow in my class comes up to me after class, he was real interested, he came like three straight weeks, he was in the class very interested. And then he didn't show up for class the next week. And I thought, oh, man, and then he didn't show up the week after. And then I read in the paper that he's in the county jail accused of homicide, shooting a kid twenty, eighteen years old. Here was a kid twenty-four years old who was doing well in school and ends up in there. So we gotta have a long term and a short term solution to this. The long term solution is making our young people able to succeed. If we have a situation in the city, I was talking to somebody the other day who's really expert in this area. And was saying, we should be putting in billboards in this city less than forty percent of black kids in the city in third grade are reading at third grade level. Because if they're not reading a third grade level when they're in third grade, they're not going to succeed. So we have to do something about early childhood. We have to do something about giving these kids the supports that they need to succeed. And that's a long term situation. Immediately, in the short term, I think there are some really good things happening. I think group violence intervention group and Urban Alliance are doing really good things in the city. And, um, that's why I am campaigning with Esteban Juarez, who works with Urban Alliance. And I'm talking to Michael Wilder from Group Violence Intervention. And, um, and Esteban, they showed me their war room that they have down there where they mediate disputes. And I believe that they have headed off a lot of murders in this city that would have happened if they didn't try to mediate those things through. So I think we need to strengthen them. I think we need to keep asking them, what are the resources you need? Um, so I believe two things. One, violence has to be off the table. You know, it's not just Kalamazoo. You know, all over the country that violence is up thirty percent all over the country, and that's horrible. So we have to say, violence is not going to be tolerated. At the same time, we have to say, and here are alternatives that we are presenting to you. Do you need changing job skills? We got them right here. Do you need, um, access to a job? We're going to help you do that. Do you want to learn? Do you want to go back to school and learn stuff? We got to do that. I think we have to engage. Um, there's a writer that, that has been very influential, David Kennedy out of John Jay College, who looks at violence in the cities and identifies that there is a small number of people, very small, that are responsible for the most of the violence. We have to identify them, we have to talk to them, and we have to offer them alternatives. Um, I think those are some of the things that have to be done.
So kind of piggybacking on that, we started off talking about income inequality. What do you, what do you feel is the, the connection between income inequality and gun violence here in the community? And kind of really thinking through that, are there ways that we can, you know, you talked about offering resources? And there's some wonderful groups out there doing that violence mediation intervention work. But do you think there's a direct connection between people's kind of level of economic desperation and a higher incidence of gun violence?
There is no doubt. My friend Ron Kramer, who was head of the Criminal Justice Department at Western Michigan University, said, this is, this is the maxim. Social supports reduce violence, the lack of social supports increase violence. There's no question about it. I believe we have to do a lot more for teenagers in this city. Um, I, I would favor creating youth centers in three neighborhoods in the city. I think we could build on some of the things that are being done here, such as the Boys and Girls Club is now rebuilding their facility. Uh, it's been knocked down and so they're rebuilding and it's going to be open next year. Um, I think the city should partner with them and see what we can do to strengthen them and make that in the Edison neighborhood, the center. I think there could be, I'm not sure this, but it seems to me strengthening the Douglas Community Center on the north side and putting some money into that. Um, and making that like a Mecca for young people on the north side. And then the other idea, the east side, and that's harder because we don't have a facility over there that we could really build on. We're going to have to build something there. And I think another possibility is keeping schools open into the night, on the weekends, and in the summer. Flint does that. Before they knock down Edison School, um, I had met with Michael Rice, um, the, the superintendent of schools at that time. And asked him, look, you're going to do something with this school. You probably don't have to knock it down because it's so old and you own that whole block. What about uniting with the city and turning that whole block into a community center? Um, building with the school and then have community center there. It's right across the street from El Consilio, um, right near Urban Alliance. We have all these different facilities, but Michael left and, and we're in a different direction now. But I think keeping the schools, we have those buildings there. How can we utilize them? When, a number of years ago, David Juarez, who was the only Hispanic ever elected to the City Commission, he and I went to Washington School and asked the superintendent if we could, not the superintendent, the, the principal, if we could use the school two nights a week for kids in the neighborhood. And we opened that school two nights a week. We went out and begged money and got enough to feed supper to those kids. We partnered with the Boys and Girls Club, they sent over a dance teacher. We partnered with Prevention Works, they sent somebody over to teach life skills to the kids. I brought down students from Western who, um, would help kids with their homework. And we opened the gym, we were getting fifty kids a night in there. And we were getting them off the streets, getting them in some positive kind of things. And I think we could do that stuff again. I think really putting the supports out there so kids don't end up in violence is, is where we got to go.
All right. Thank you, Don. Really informative answers. And I may, I think I'll link to the show, some of those are community groups that are doing some of that really great work out there in Kalamazoo community.
Great, great.
Um, so next question has to do with pollution. Uh, so graphic packaging has come up recently in the news for false smells and higher incidence of asthma near their areas of operation. Science, I've seen just kind of going back and forth on the direct correlation causation of it. But what is your stance on this type of pollution? Do you think the city has a responsibility to address, um, you know, this type of environmental racism? Classism is no GPIs near Northside, which is Kalamazoo's largest black working class neighborhood. And, um, you know, even, uh, you know, you know, even supposing there aren't, you can't prove really lethal health effects. At the very least, they have to deal with some really potent nuisance orders, odors, sorry. Uh, and there is a demonstrably lar- larger rate of asthma near that area. So again, what do you think the city could be doing more to kind of, you know, hold companies like this accountable? Have a better relationship to prevent this kind of thing from happening?
Right. And I don't think it's all graphics packaging. I think graphics package is one of the players. I think the city has a responsibility, um, with the wastewater treatment plan up there for the, for the smells in the area and everything that's going on with that. I'm very concerned about that. Um, there was an article in a paper a while ago about a doctor in Chicago who, who wrote about, um, the influence to that on healthcare, not just the smells, but the different pollution that was coming in. And I saw a statistic that said, when you look at the, um, four nine oh oh seven census tract and compare that to the, um, the most affluent, um, census tract in the county, there's a life expectancy of more than a dozen years difference. That's wrong. That shouldn't be that. Um, we, I am very interested in looking at what is going on here and what can we do to remedy it and then taking action. Um, I know that the state is looking at this. Um, I'll be anxious to see what they have to say, but I don't think this should be left alone. I think we have to follow up with this. Um, this is no good for these kids. It's no good for these families. And I think that as a city, we certainly have a responsibility. These are our people, these are our, our citizens. We need to follow up, get to the bottom, what is going on here? What, what needs to be done? What is the remedy? I think those things we have to do.
All right. Thank you, Don. Uh, next question is about policing. Uh, so twenty twenty was a watershed year in regards to the national discussion around policing. Um, I wanted to kind of parse out what your thoughts are on, you know, defund the police or kind of reallocating police funding to other programs. Um, how you think problems with policing should be addressed in Kalamazoo? And also what responsibility you think the city has to prevent inappropriate, inadequate responses to events last summer, I think particularly of what happened at the kind of the time of BLN uprisings were going on, the tear gassing of protesters. Uh, there was also the response to the Proud Boys insurgency into the city that the police department has been garnered a lot of criticism about. Um, so that's kind of a multi-part question, but I was wondering if you could kind of walk through them and you could tell us kind of what your take on it.
Right. So, um, I am not for eliminating the police. I think that's a big mistake to say that. I mean, especially when we have all this violence going on out there. But the police are not the ones that are totally responsible for safety in the city. And I think the police, um, that we need to look at other models around the country, like the Kahoots model that is in Oregon, where they bring in social workers and mental health workers to work with the police and to go out on calls. You can call the nine one one and then the person there will decide, do they need a police person to go out? Do they need a social worker? Do they need a homework? Or do they need all three? And I think we're starting to do that in the city. I've met with the chief of police. Um, I think, I think that, um, we, I, I very much admire what Vern Payne is doing in his committee, which holds the police to, to be accountable. I think we need to support him in what he's doing. Um, I think also the, there were serious mistakes made last summer, no question about it. Um, we really have to work on de-escalation, no question about that. Um, and I think, um, there has to be accountability. There has to be a stronger relationship between the police and, uh, um, the communities. Um, I don't think that the police can be effective if we don't have trust. And we have to build up that trust. But it's a mistake to think that it's the police that are going to keep us safe. We're not going to be safe until we do more in the community to provide the supports that people need so they don't have to turn to violence and crime. And so I think we need more than one attack here. Um, I, I, there's a book called Bleeding Out, which I'm, I think the police, I know that the police now are using, which talks about prevention and talks about, um, trying to find alternatives for people rather than getting involved in violence and crime. So make a long story short, I think the, the city has to be right on top of this. I think we have to have strong relationships and discussions with the police. I think that they have to, to develop trust. I think they have to be accountable. I don't, I think that we have to widen the whole idea of public safety to include, um, bringing in mental health workers and social workers into what has traditionally been police work. Um, so I think there are some directions in which we should go. I, I, I can tell you this, that I think I have pretty good relationships with the police. Um, I, right while I was a city commissioner, we developed the program for guys coming out of incarceration and helped them get back into the community. I worked with pastor, um, on, on the Edison neighborhood. Um, and we developed a program which was very, very successful. Um, and in doing that, we met with the police a lot, talking with them, and they were very cooperative with us and very helpful with us. So, um, I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done here. Um, and I think that, um, working together with the police, with GVI, with Urban Alliance, we can move forward on these issues.
Okay, so I'm going to have a follow-up question and it's kind of specific to some of these high-profile protest events. Um, so I just kind of putting yourself, um, you know, let's say you, you having one of these conversations with, you know, the, you know, Chief Cokely or someone else. Uh, and they were to ask you, you know, how do we prevent something like what happened last summer with, with the tear gas? Or, uh, you know, a, a better response to having kind of a hate group march into town? What would be your specific recommendations as a city commissioner in a situation like that?
Let's take the hate group first. Early on, when I was a city commissioner, the Klan came to Kalamazoo for a demonstration. And what we did, our strategy was isolate them. Move everybody else to a different section of the community. Don't allow, let's, let's not allow a confrontation because that's what they want. And that gets publicity out of it and that's what they're here for. So working with the Mothers of Hope, the Mothers of Hope developed a, what they called the Ultimate Family Reunion over at Spring Valley Park. And we didn't know how many people would come. Over a thousand people came out there. And when the Klan came for their demonstration, I think six people came to their demonstration. They were isolated, we put the focus way away from them. And I think that was a mistake that was made this summer. That they, it was set up in such a way that confrontation was inevitable because, um, there was no effort to isolate them. If you isolated them, I think that would have been a better thing. The second thing, um, with the, um, the tear gas and stuff like that, I mean, I'm, I got a lifetime of involvement in demonstrations and protests and I've been arrested for it. But when, when I've been involved in those things, I've, I've always emphasized communication. Um, letting people know, hey, we're coming down, we're going to be out here, we're going to be taking a stand. And telling people sometimes, like we did at Western, when I got arrested at Western, we're going to take an action and you're going to have to arrest us because we're not going to comply. But we're not going to be totally nonviolent. Communication, I think there has to be more communication between people that are in the demonstrations and in the police themselves.
All right. Thank you, Don. Our next, uh, this is probably going to be a very big question. Um, especially with everything that's been going on in the last couple of weeks. Um, but you know, one, how would you judge the city's ongoing response? Um, but, you know, one, how would you judge the city's ongoing response uh homelessness? Uh, what, what more do you think you should be done on the issue? And I just want to preface this by saying, uh, you know, um. Especially during COVID, it seemed like there was more of an effort to, I guess I'd call it like housing triage. Um, you know, helping people at points of like emergency, but it it almost feels uh. With these, these sweeps that have been going on last couple of weeks, there was just one today um over at stadium.
I didn't know that, today.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, just on M Life. Um, but uh, it does feel in some ways the clock's kind of been. There's being kind of turned back on some of the stuff. And I know this is something that you've spoken out about at length, so, um, again. Uh, how would you judge the city's ongoing response to homelessness? What, what would you like to see done?
Well, I'd rather talk about what I see as the alternatives than judging them, because I'm not on the scene, so I'm, I'd kind of. I'm gonna leave that where they are. So I'm gonna tell you what I think is an alternative.
Oh, great, yes.
First of all, um, and I've been out there many times to the encampment. And my students and I bought food out there a lot. Um, so I'm familiar with them. I, when they were supposed to close it down last week, I was out there and walked all around and talked with the people. Um, and wanted to show solidarity with those folks. But here's something I learned, um. That's the tip of the iceberg, and maybe people know all this already, but I hadn't thought about this in this way. Because I talked to some black leaders and they said, Don, there's black mothers that aren't going out there. And there's black mothers with kids. That are homeless and living in people's basements and putting tents in people's backyards and couch surfing, and you don't even see them. And that's a huge part of the homeless situation, and that has to be dealt with. So, here's, here's a couple of thoughts. I don't have. I believe that we need a collective response to this. I think we have individual groups that are doing good things. We don't have a collective response. And I think that the city should be the catalyst to develop that collective response. So what would be in that collective response? First of all, we have to build more low-income housing, no question about it. That is the biggest area. I mean, we know that there are, we are at least three to five thousand. Short of affordable, um, units of housing in the city, so we have to build more. That costs a lot of money. And I don't believe we're gonna solve that problem unless the federal government gets involved. You know, during the nineteen sixties, there was a lot of housing built. They were mistakes made. But there were a lot of good, affordable housing units built. That all changed when Ronald Reagan became president. When Ronald Reagan became president in nineteen eighty, he cut the budget for housing and urban development. By seventy-five percent, and that's never been restored. And under President Trump, we had somebody in there who didn't believe that we should expand public housing, shouldn't do anything about it. In the bill that's before Congress now, um, for Build Back Better Act. There is three hundred and twenty billion dollars for uh housing development. It's crucial that that pass. So I think that. The federal government has to be involved in this issue, not to say we're not the only, that we can't do anything. We can do a lot. We can, um, build more, and we got money now. To build more affordable housing units, that's one thing. The second thing is, um, I don't think that we should make the alternative for people that are homeless. Make the only alternative the Gospel Mission. I think the Gospel Mission does really good work, and God bless them for what they're doing. A lot of my students work there. I know the director, and I think they do great work, but it's not for everybody. And I think we have to have an alternative for people. Um, and I like the, the, the idea of what is going on in Eugene, Oregon. Where they built these little huts that you can lock and make pods of twenty, surround that with a fence. And then put the supports for people and say, hey, we're gonna help you. We're gonna help you as much as we can, and you can stay here for a year. We're gonna stay with you and give you what, what you need to get out of this situation. I think, I think we have to do that. The homeless aren't gonna go away, and it's gonna get cold very soon, and we have to do something about this pretty quick. Okay, so that's, that's, that's another thing that I think has to be done. Um, so many other ideas that that I think are out there that that would make a real difference. Um, housing first, we have to have a policy that. When I, when I talk to people about this issue, they say, look, when we talk. Eighty percent of the discussion is about structure, physical structure, twenty percent is about the people. I think it should be maybe the other way around. Eighty percent about the people and twenty percent about the structure. Because there's people that are mentally ill, there's people that have substance abuse problems, there's women that have been. The, the, the object of violence, there's people who have lost their jobs and can't get them back. How can we help those people succeed? I mean, I think that's where we gotta put a lot more effort. So, this is not an easy issue. No city in the country has solved it, but we can make progress. We can do better. And we have to advocate with the federal government to take leadership in this.
All right. Thank you, Don, and I have another question that's kind of a follow-up to that. Um, but it's about how, uh, how you think uh the city could increase the stock. Um, of affordable housing, which again is like a key component of any, any type of housing first uh solution. And uh, just a couple of things I want to bring up is kind of specific, specific questions of that, and you think. Um, should the city, uh, do you think the city should directly buy up some of these empty houses and property? Um, there's, there's other models I've seen in other cities of like kind of community, uh, land trusts or banks that are trying to. So like what component of like reclaiming some of these empty properties rests on the city? And what other uh affordable housing solutions should the city uh invest in?
I want to say that, um, there are people, just as with climate change, there are people who are experts in this, in this city. I think Stephanie Hoffman with Open Doors has been working in this area for such a long time. Housing Resources people, um, and I think there's other people. I think we need to, they are already bringing these people together, but it hasn't issued in a collective response. I think we have to bring together, I don't have the expertise to solve that problem, but I think the expertise is out there. In our community, I think it is with the people that are working in this area. I think it is in researchers, I think it is in the homeless people themselves. I think it is in the people that work with them. I think we have to bring all those people together. And we have to say, okay, one, what's working? What's not working? What are the gaps? What do we need to do to fill the gaps? And we're giving you a month. Come back to us with a recommendation. I think the city could be the catalyst to do that. I don't think the city has the expertise to solve this problem. But I think the expertise is out there in those groups that I have mentioned, and I think we have to draw on their expertise. Uh, and come up with a collective response. I don't think we come up with a collective response. I think we got a little bit, little bit, little bit. It's not working.
All right, uh, thank you, Don. Um, and, and again, uh, by the way, I. You know, listeners on the show, we're always eager to have people on who are experts on those issues, so you know, if you're listening, I'd love to have you on, talk more. Um, so, uh, same goes for climate and all that, all that stuff as well. Um, so, uh, next question, and I'm gonna tweak this a little bit, uh, just because, uh, what, what I know. You were actually on the commission when the foundation is being set up. Um, so, you know, the FFE just received about four hundred million dollars. Uh, so this is kind of a two-part question. Um, so given uh some of the concerns. And critiques that were initially made about the foundation. Um, what, how, how do you think, um, you think from, from then to now? Um, has this, uh, has it kind of successfully uh dealt with, with some of those issues? And I am thinking of things like, um, uh, the Imagine Kalamazoo, which did. Uh, you know, to, to its immense credit, actually farm out a lot of community input for these programs, but. Um, a lot of the issues people were concerned about kind of, um, uh, transparency. And, you know, the worry about like just a handful of very wealthy people, you know, going into the city budget. Do you think those issues have been kind of worked through in a meaningful way? And the second part of this question is, um, you know, we have this four hundred million dollar windfall. Um, again, it's spaced out over a number of years, but what do you think should be the financial priorities of the city? Now, we do have a little bit of walking around money, so.
Um, okay, so I think the priority of the city should be, what can we do? For the people in the city that don't have access to what they need. Um, I'd like what Roosevelt said, the measure of our success is not whether we do more for those who have an abundance. But whether we do enough for those who don't have enough. I think that should be the motto of the city. These are the people we gotta focus on, these people that are in struggle, and that's where we should put our money. I, I think that, first of all. I. Think that, um, that the Foundation for Excellence has done a really, a good service to the community. It's not perfect, not at all perfect. But I remember the situation where the Foundation for Excellence came in. Because as you say, I was on the commission at that time, and, um. We were in a position, when I first started on, on the city commission, we had nine hundred and ten city employees. And at the time that we started looking at the Foundation for Excellence, we were down to six hundred and thirty-six. And there was no end in sight, and it would have been impossible to balance the city's budget. Without doing an income tax, and the income tax would have balanced the budget. But it wouldn't have given us money for aspirational projects that, that we wanted to do, like the Poverty Reduction Initiative. So, um, the city went, especially Bobby Hopewell, went to some of the billionaires. And talked to them and, um, said, hey, this is what we need. Um, and Bobby explicitly asked for five hundred billion dollars. I mean, come on. Five hundred million dollars, wow. So, um, they agreed to do that. So. I met with a couple of those guys, a couple of billionaires for the first time in my life. And, um, I, I made it really clear that what I was most interested in was intergenerational poverty. And they agreed that that was what they were most interested in. And so they put the money up, and I think they have been trying to funnel money. To use for intergenerational poverty. So, I don't want billionaires running the city. But it's set up in such a way that none of the money is spent without the city commission, and that was one of the things we put in there. And that if the city commission doesn't agree with the recommendations of the panel, it's not that. The billionaires are not, they have a separate, um, committee. That, that handles the resources and stuff. So, you know, I think the Foundation for Excellence has done a lot. It's enabled us to balance our budget, it's enabled us to lower the tax rate, property tax rate. A lot of the money has, significant amount of the money has gone into Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo. Which has, um, done a lot for communities. Um, and on the north side, I was up visiting Mattie Jordan Wood last week. And she was able to start a program up there for caregivers, and. Those people have been trained, they've all gotten jobs, and some of them have gotten jobs at Bronson Hospital. Where they have a career platform for them to move up. Um, when I started that program with, with Pastor Cunningham in the Edison neighborhood. For guys coming out of uh incarceration, they gave the money there for that to, to get off the ground. They've put money into, um, youth programs on the east side. So I think there's a lot of really good that comes out of it, but I agree that it. Elected officials have to be the final word about how the city's finances are, are conducted.
All right, uh, thank you, Don, and I guess just one little follow-up to that. Um, you know, I think like, you, you know, as a lot of people on the ground, and you know, this, this stuff I hear, a lot of people are very concerned about gentrification. Um, you know, when you boil it down, like it's, uh, if people are concerned when they see. You know, a new, a new hotel being built downtown or a stadium that a lot of, a lot of Kalamazoo residents didn't really want. It seems to just get, keep, keep getting pushed and pushed and pushed. Um, where, you know, there's like, there's always discussions about like, why can't we use that, you know, land for like affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. So do you think, um, is there a, a better sense? Uh, or what kind of sense is there that like, you know, a lot of these solutions really have to, you have to give those resources to working-class people. In order to have a really prosperous community, uh, versus like concerns that, um, the city's being actively gentrified. Or things like that.
Yeah, well, when I found out that there were thirty-eight million dollars. That were given by the federal government to the city, um, and that they, um, this city had. Pretty much discretion to spend those monies any way they want. I wrote up a, a plan for how to use that money. And I sent it to the city manager, the mayor, and each one of the city commissioners. And the first thing I said in there is, we got thirty-eight million dollars here. I would give a million dollars to the North Side Association for Community Development, the Edison Neighborhood Association. And the East Side Neighborhood Association and say, talk to the people in your neighborhood and decide how that money should be spent. Put the people in charge, and, but I do think that, um, that we should be. For, the, the priority should be putting the money and working people and, and the poor. I'm, I am not a supporter of a, um, of, um. Of the field house, what do you call it, a, uh?
The stadium, uh, proposed entertainment, uh, complex.
Yeah, 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 I, I, when this came up a long time ago, you know? And I talked to some people that were experts in this, and they told me that in order to make this work. You would have to have programs a hundred and eighty nights a year. And that, and, and, and they talk about moving Western's basketball games over there and the hockey games over there and stuff like that. I, those games should be on the campus for the, for the college kids. I don't, I don't, um, I'm a long way from being convinced about that one. I don't like that. I think that, that the priority should be investing, as you said, in working people and their families. And in people that are in struggle, and that's what I'll fight for.
All right. Thank you, Don. I, I really appreciate that answer, and especially given all that, that very important context for a lot of listeners out there. Uh, so our next question, uh, it's, this is an interesting one, because it's kind of a, it's a global issue. But it, it has a very, uh, local, uh, flavor to it. So I'm gonna set, set this up with a little bit of context, although if you're a long-time listener, you've probably heard me and my co-hosts talk about this issue a lot. Uh, so Pfizer is one of the corporations that has been manufacturing a vaccine to treat COVID nineteen. Uh, so, uh, we've given a lot of praise on the show to the local workers and scientists at Pfizer, uh, here in Kalamazoo Portage. They, they've really, uh, helped, uh, you know, the, the whole world in this time of crisis. But, um, we've been very critical of the company's executive board. Uh, for stonewalling some critical patent waivers that could help manufacture and distribute the vaccine to scale. Uh, for poorer countries, and, you know, just in context, this has been very, a very prevalent, uh, resurfacing issue. And progressive news outlets, you're a viewer of, uh, like Democracy Now!, or NPR, or even, uh, like The Intercept, et cetera. There's been a lot of journalism about, um, uh, the role of companies like Pfizer. In one, uh, kind of structuring the rules the way they are, and also preventing, uh, these, these critical patent waivers. That could help expedite the process of manufacturing vaccines, uh, for poorer countries. And what's always been very interesting to me is watching this play out over the last year and a half is that. Even, um, even though I've seen like global journalism about this, um, it's been. um, it's been relatively quiet here in Kalamazoo Portage, even though this, this company is literally in our backyard. Uh, so I was just wondering like, what is your stance on this issue? And, um, you know, while I, I understand, you know, the city commission can't necessarily control what a company-based portage does, would you support a city resolution urging Pfizer to waive their patent for the COVID-19 vaccine?
My, my idea on this is that the model should be the Salk vaccine for polio. When Jonas Salk, um, discovered, identified the, the, uh, the vaccine for polio, and they said, you're gonna make a lot of money on this, he said, I'm making many money on this, it should be in the public sphere. I think the same thing should be done here with the vaccine. I think the technology should be in the public domain. Um, and, um, looking at the statistics in the developing countries, about 1% of the people have had access to the vaccine. So personally, I am for that, and I'm willing to speak out for it. But I think before you try to bring it to a city commission resolution, there has to be a lot of education done. There has to be a lot of homework done, or else it won't pass, and then it wouldn't, wouldn't be, it would be a loss then. So personally, I believe that's what should happen. And, um, I've said that and I'll continue to say that. Um, but for a resolution, I think there has to be a lot more work done.
Okay, I think, I mean, that was more of an example, but I guess like, uh, you talk about like some of the education and, and whatnot, like, what, what, what do you think can be, be done at the local level, level to kind of, you know, at least like influence or get more public awareness about, um, this particular issue going on with Pfizer and, and the other companies, uh, manufacturing vaccines in America?
Um, you know, I think, I'll go back to an example, okay? Um, I spent a lot of time, more than a dozen years, working on the anti-apartheid situation. And I've worked for 25 years as a volunteer with the Emer- with the Emergent Friends Service Committee and on campus here and in the community, I worked 12 years. We had an organization called the South African Solidarity Organization. We worked with Nelson Mandela's African National Congress. And our experience was that we joined with people nationally that were working on this issue and internationally. The first thing we did was contact the African National Congress. They had a, um, they had a representative in New York called the Washington Office on Africa. We connected with them and said, how can we help? What do we need to do? And they told us, well, the issue is divestment, we're trying to isolate South Africa. And then we figured out a way to do that. But what we did it was what made us successful, because Western was the sixth university in the country to, to break its economic ties with South Africa. Eventually, 112 universities did. What made it successful was we spoke out locally, but joined our voices to other groups around the country who were speaking out. And I think the city commission can be a catalyst to try to raise the consciousness in the community to take actions with other groups around the country to put the issue on the agenda and to advocate for it moving forward.
All right, thank you, Don, I appreciate that. And, uh, that about ends, uh, my line of questions. I want to thank you again for joining us. It's been a really, uh, insightful, sprawling conversation. But, uh, before we wrap up, were there any other issues that you wanted to discuss that, um, I didn't cover with my questions?
Andy, I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate what the people are all doing with the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm a dues-paying member to the Democratic Socialists of America. Um, and I think that it's really important to raise different viewpoints, different strategies, different visions. Um, and I think that's what you're doing, and I think that's what DSA is doing. And I think the present situation is unjust and unsustainable and we have to work to change it, and I, I admire what you're doing. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for letting me speak today.
All right, okay, Don, and just, uh, one last thing. If people want to find out more about you or your campaign, uh, how would they do that?
We have a Facebook page called Don Cooney for Kalamazoo.
All right, and remember everybody, Election Day is November 2nd. And up until that day, you can, uh, go down to City Hall, you can find it, just, uh, fill out a, uh, absentee ballots or, uh, that's what you call it. Uh, so very, yeah, voting access is pretty good and robust here in the city and the state. So, uh, again, thank you, Don, uh, good luck on your campaign and have an excellent day.
Thanks, Andy, you too, appreciate it.